We're so beaten when we sit in and see. She's so aggressive, she's already taken the initiative. I can't see her. And I'm not.
You know, Bart, if I can.
This is a warning, if you have any secrets, we're gonna come out like two minutes in. Hey Coach, you call me? Concede. I'm sorry it took me so long, don't. No, no, absolutely. Tom pushes his mic and hates it a lot.
They don't talk for me.
Romy, don't kick my cord.
What I saw.
Yeah, just make sure that you.
Well, one day when we get off work going, there's this thing called multi with one of the switches. Mrs. Clark, are you ready for the clock? This is a little. No, no, this is pre-footed, you don't have to worry about that. We're not, we're not starting, we're just recording. Go ahead.
All right. Wait, hear me? Well, welcome, my name is Josh Taylor, I'm the executive director of the Allegheny Highlands Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. Thank you for attendance this evening at the Covington City Council Candidates Forum hosted by the Allegheny Highlands Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. Thank you candidates for being here with us this evening. We appreciate the city of Covington for allowing us to use the city hall council chambers. And we'd also like to thank the Covington Women's Club for assisting with the event. We'd like to thank the local media for being here tonight for streaming the Candidates Forum for us. And thank you to Nancy Moga in the back for serving on the review panel. And to John Fitzgerald as well for serving as our timer this evening. We ask that everyone go ahead and silence their phones at this time. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce John and Eric who will serve as the moderators for us this evening.
Thank you very much Josh, and moderator had to silence his phone too, so thank you for that reminder. It is my distinct privilege, I think, to keep all of you all in line tonight, but I don't think it's gonna be a hard job, so. If I can, I'll echo what Josh said, and I appreciate everybody's attendance tonight. If we're there, we can go over the rules here. The way we will go about this is each candidate will have one minute to give an opening statement. Then we'll move on to the question and answer portion. All the questions must be submitted to the review panel with Moga, is at the back there, if you have any questions during the forum here, you can submit those to her. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. We will rotate in the order in which we answer. The timer, and that's Mr. Fitzgerald, he will raise his hand when you have thirty seconds remaining. And he will stand up when your time is up, so we just ask if that happens, wrap your comments up as briskly as you can. At the conclusion of the forum, each candidate will have three minutes to present their statements about their candidacy and explain why they are running for office. So let me introduce everybody before we get started. From District Three, we have Mr. Lee Rowe. And then, running against him who is not here tonight is Mr. Raymond Hunter. For District Four, we have Ms. Susan Wolf and Mr. Thomas Seibold Jr. And for District Five, we have Mr. David Crozier and Ms. Susan Crowder. So, again, thank you all for being here. And we will start in alphabetical order for our opening statements. So, that would put Mr. Crozier, it would be you first up, so if you will share.
All right, the only time I've ever been chosen for something in the first in my life. Welcome, and first of all, let me thank the chamber for putting these forums on, not just this one, but the one for the school board coming up and the one for the Clinton Forge last night. Thank you all very much for doing that, it's a great service to the community. My name is David Crozier, if you don't know me, born and raised here in Covington. And I have been on council since July 1st, 2012. I've been involved in public service in one hand or another for about thirty-three years. And I want to thank District Five for allowing me the privilege to have served them for the past twelve years. I didn't want John to have to stand up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crozier and Mrs. Crowder.
Okay, my name is Susan Scott Crowder, and I'm running for Covington City Council in the fifth district. A little about myself, I was born and raised here in Covington. I'm a proud graduate of Covington High School, and I have a degree in dental hygiene. I'm married to Jay Crowder, and together we have four children and four grandchildren. I returned home to Covington in the year 2000, and I'm employed at Slaughter and Slaughter Family Dentistry as a registered dental hygienist, celebrating my twenty-fourth year this week. I feel my career in dental hygiene will be a great asset on city council, because I've seen firsthand, sorry. I'm seeing firsthand the value of listening and understanding and working together to solve problems, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rowe.
My name is Lee Rowe, I moved here in seventy-six and started the second grade. Went to Covington High School, I've been employed at the mill for thirty-four years. I've been a life member of Lifeline Ministries. Been in fire EMS for thirty-two of those years, captain and leadership roles. Also own two businesses in accounting, but we do a lot of support for the city. Running for council, sometimes in life you get a calling or a certain aspect that you think maybe it's time for you to step up and do some things. Thank you for your support, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Seibold.
Thank you, John. Tom Seibold, for those of you who don't know me.
I'm a lifelong resident of Covington, attended the city schools. Went to DSLCC for many years, just taking courses that I wanted to take. Now I'm at Gateway Community College. Got a job at VDOT in the late seventies, and worked from an operator to a supervisor. Budget team, highway maintenance, or the fields that I was, thank you, John, I was most, most active in VDOT. So, you know, the budget team, the highway maintenance, those types of things, the supervision, I think all of those go a long ways and give me the ability to serve the city of Covington.
Thank you, Mrs. Seibold, Ms. Wolf.
My name is Susan Chiffle Wolf, I'm a lifelong resident of Covington. I live on Trout Street. I have two children, I have a degree in business management. I've worked for the city of Covington in Parks and Recreation for about six years. I was the rest area supervisor for Gerald's Run for seventeen, and you won't ask to raise your hand.
Thank you, Mrs. Wolf. Okay, let me then bring us to the question and answer portion, we already have some questions that have already been submitted. So, we will do this again in alphabetical order and then of course rotate as we go through. I gave you a little while.
Can we go the other direction?
We will for closing statements, yes sir. So, Mr. Crozier, this first question will be to you first. Pretty straightforward, it's a two-part question. Why do you want to be on council, and the second part is what are your goals?
For the first question, sometimes I ask myself that. On my drive here, I say, what am I doing here? Very honestly, my first year on council, I spent the first six months thinking I knew everything, and then for the second six months, I tried to figure out how I got here. While I'm running for city council for a fourth term, there's work left to be done. We have come a long way in twelve years. A lot of people don't understand the financial position we were in in 2012, we were almost broke. I mean, I'll just put it out there. Wasn't any fault of anybody who came before. We were coming out of the Great Recession of '08, and we had a lot of work to do. And we've spent the last twelve years building up our fund balance, catching up infrastructure, doing a lot of projects in the city that hadn't been able to be done before. And that is only due to the staff. I tell people all the time, if the city does something good, the staff did it. If the city does something bad, it's council's fault, and I think that's pretty fair. We've got a great staff, I really enjoy working with the staff we have here in the city of Covington. And as far as goals, biggest goal for the next four years, very simply, not only to keep the positive momentum going as we have been. I want to see the Rayon Bridge project done. That's a project that I have been very involved in, and taken a great interest in over the last twelve years, and by the grace of God in VDOT, that's gonna be coming along in '26. So, that's my biggest goal for wanting to run again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crozier, Mrs. Crowder, I'll go ahead and re-ask again. What are, what do you want to, why do you want to be on council, excuse me, and what are your goals?
So, I want to be on council because I feel that I can make a difference. I want to try to get citizens more involved. I started this adventure about two and a half years ago, when some things happened here at the city that I didn't exactly, I guess, agree with. And so I started getting involved with coming to city council meetings, and volunteering for Woodtown Covington, and asking people questions, and you know what was going on in the area. We actually came up with seven pages of things that people told me that they wanted to see either change improved upon, or that they might want us to try to at least like look into. And then they also made me think about how I could do this to make people want to be more involved, because I feel like in order for our area to grow, that we need to have more people involved in volunteering, and have more support. I actually tried little ways on Facebook in order to get people to come to meetings. Invite personally invited them on Facebook, and then starting a Facebook page Concerned Citizens for a Better Covington in Allegheny Highlands, so that I could. Well, it started out that we would tell everything that was going on, but then thanks to some help that I have from Ms. Martha and Ms. Kathy, we've turned it into a page where we share most like all the good things that go on. So my goal is to get the community involved, and I also have a goal of just making, just having an input and a fresh approach and fresh ideas for city council.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowder. Mr. Rowe, again, I'll rephrase the question, why do you want to be on Covington City Council, and what are your goals?
I guess, I've been coming regularly for ten years now on some things. Things changing as the future grows. Sometimes you need fresh ideas, new aspects, not saying anything negative to the people that are there. They make tough decisions that behind the scenes you don't know what's going on, what they have to do. I agree with some of what Susan has said, you need open forum, more understanding, some of them decisions behind the scenes, people don't understand, good or bad. But more communication relieves a lot of problems. Especially these, we all know we need businesses. I know I've been somewhat there in life, we'll use Applebee's for example. To get them here, they made a lot of concessions. Applebee's didn't make it because of the pandemic, no, nothing to do with the city of Covington or any of the leadership. But some other things, we could need some maybe community review boards for our police department. Excellent police department, there might be some ways that the community could actually help them. Regular meetings to people to come in anonymously, anonymous, and give ideas to them of what's going on in the community as a whole, that they may not get in general. From people just calling in or whatever, people don't want to get involved, but sometimes word of mouth for COVID this long time goes a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Mr. Seibold, why do you want to be on city council, and what are your goals?
I want to be on city council to continue the progress we've made over the last several years. We've seen a lot of change and a lot of good things have happened. We've run into a lot of problems. When Dave and I first came on, we had a deratio on Friday night, we took offense on midnight Sunday. First meeting ever was mayor, this room was full, it didn't have any power because of the deratio. Lot of arguing, lot of fussing, but we made it through the deratio. And we've made it through COVID, and I think it's time now to move forward again, and I think we can do that with good leadership. Not against anybody up here, I'm willing to serve again as the public wants me to serve again. You know, some of the goals I would have is to continue the intergovernmental cooperation that we started. We have a relationship with Allegheny County that we didn't have twelve years ago, thirteen years ago. We've got a great relationship with Clinton Ford and Iron Gate, we didn't have those things before. I don't see the Allegheny Highlands surviving without that cooperation. And one of the things I want to do is make sure we stay at the table with them and see how we can progress.
Thank you, Mrs. Seibold. Mrs. Wolf, what do you want to accomplish on Covington City Council in the end quarter?
The reason I ran is because there were some things going on within the city that I wasn't happy with at the time. And I want more transparency in the government, I want the citizens to know what's going on, how the money's being spent. And I think we need to find something for children to do that doesn't have anything to do with sports, because every kid didn't have that. So, we need arts, technology, tutoring, something on that level. We need business here, somewhere in shop of the Walmart and Dots. And I think we just need to come together as a community to make all this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us then to our second question, and again, going with our rotation, Mrs. Crowder, you want to start off, you want to go for us this question? The question is, what are you going to do to draw industry to our area that is not already being done?
Well, first off, I feel like I need to meet with the Economic Development Corporation and the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe the Small Business Coordinator, to see what things that they actually have in process, and for us to work together in order to plan things. I really feel like with community involvement though, that we can start supporting our small businesses, our restaurants more in our area, and it's going to make it so that they're more profitable, and the more that our local small businesses, the better that they do, I feel like it'll, more people to want to start new businesses as well, and hopefully continue to grow in our area. So, I'm just hoping that we can get people volunteering, and people being active in the community, and that it will help us to continue to grow.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowder. Mr. Rowe, we'll come to you next, what are you going to do to draw industry to our area that is not already being done?
Well, there's a lot of grant programs out there, and sometimes, some of these information, we may not know that the city is already doing. But a lot of times you've got fresh ideas. You see all of these small towns that are booming, Bottotat, Lewisburg, things like that, somewhere along the line, they had to get that money to do it, and these gentlemen may have already explored his ideas. But we need there where there's grant money out, but sometimes a grant writer themselves pays for itself a hundredfold, when that's somebody just exploring themselves. Twenty-four hours a week, forty hours a week, just a grant writer to explore all this money that's out there. Also, they've got to get rest in big businesses here. I know years ago, they did a lot of sacrificing to get these companies in here, Walmart, things like that, where they give them a lot of incentive programs. To get in here where long-term they was getting money back on a long-term basis. Walmart is paid for itself a hundredfold. That whole spot right there has been, and unfortunately, downtowns are not thriving in the industrial part of it. People want downtown to be able to come to do shops, eateries and things of that nature, but your industry is growing out from inside the inner city. So we need to make sure we can capitalize on what we have here as a whole city as a whole, and utilize it. And that will be also doing a lot of research of what possibly already been done or started to get this in here.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Mr. Seibold, next to you, what would you do to draw industry to our area that is not already being done?
I think I'm gonna keep doing what I've been doing. I'm all over the state, meeting with people, I've got a lot of connections that I didn't have twelve years ago. I've got a lot of connections that I didn't have twelve years ago. Want to look at properties here, we've got people coming the first weekend, October, to look at the pad site, to look at the rain over rivers, to look at some other industrial sites we have. So we're bringing people to look. The incentives aren't entirely used to be. We don't have the money to give incentives like we did years ago. So we can't incentivize as some areas can. I know Bottotat, they're grosses so fast that their tax revenue is just doubling almost and we're, our tax revenue not doubling. So how do we raise money to pay the things we have to pay for and then have some money left over to apply to economic development and industrial development? There's a lot of people that are looking at our area, it's just how do we get a type thing?
Thank you, Mr. Chetwell. Ms. Wolf, what would you do to draw industry to our area that is not already being done?
Well, I agree with Ms. Crowder, but we talked to the Chamber of Commerce and the Small Economic Development and the city leaders to see what can be done and see what kind of grants are out there and incentives to bring business in here and then just be in search of.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Crozier, what would you do to draw industry to our area that is not already being done?
Well, first of all, you used the wrong pronoun. Twelve years ago, when I ran and I sat up here and got asked this very same question, there was a lot of stuff I was going to do. Then I had to learn the hard way that it's very little about I, it's all about we. So in twelve years, and Tom alluded to the cooperation between the governments, the pad ready site would not have been a thing had it not been for the cooperation between Allegheny County and Covington with the revenue sharing agreement and the relationship we have with the other two governments. The biggest part of, and I say this as politically correct as possible, but here goes. Our people have to do better about being a better salesman for our city. Let me give you an example. In 2019, I was the chairman of the Economic Development Corporation for a brief time while we were in transition. Story was told to me that a industry was in here looking at the area and had gone to a local restaurant to eat. Now, people are in here all the time looking and we don't know they're here, but they go to our restaurants. They were raised a couple of weeks ago. And the story I was told was these two people from the industry were sitting down eating. At the table next to them, there were two people saying they couldn't wait to get out of Covington because it was trash. What does that do for somebody coming in here that doesn't know the area? Their responsibility, if it's not good enough for them, it's not good enough for us. So not only is there a responsibility on councils end, working with the local governments to make these options available, the other side of it is a lot of responsible citizenship. You have to do better. If we're going to do better, five people on city council and a city manager can't do it. It's going to take all of us. That's why I say that the question was phrased wrong with an I. You can sit down now.
Thank you, Mr. Crozier. All right, that'll bring us to a fresh question, our third question of the evening. Mr. Rowe, we'll start off with this. We have some of the lowest real estate taxes in the state. Would you support tax increases for infrastructure upgrades, road improvements and revitalization efforts?
That's a question that's probably asked every council or government body. Raising taxes is a negative all the way around. Sometimes you have to do it, but we also have other avenues we need to pursue before we raise taxes on our citizens. Bring in more revenue, less on the tax people. Back like with Allegheny County, Clifton Ford. The site pad is a great thing. It's a, you know, it's not a overnight success, but in long-term it will be. Things like that where we can actually work together to bring in revenue. I believe there's some other restaurants that was coordinated with some citizens that brought some major restaurants in here. You just gotta look at all the revenues, the last resort will be raising taxes, even ones of citizens also, so we do not want to raise taxes unless we have to. Every day we see prices rise and eventually that is, may have to happen. But if there's other avenues we can pursue to get revenue in here to keep the tax rate down, the houses here, we have a lot of houses that need upgraded. But to get revenue in here, you have to have a housing system. Slowly, that's happening down in Lomond area. So to build on the company, also got to get your infrastructure in one piece to entice people to come in.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Next to you, Mr. Sibot, we have some of the lowest real estate taxes in the state. Would you support tax increases for infrastructure upgrades, road improvements and revitalization efforts?
The first forum I participated in, we were asked the same question. And my answer then was no, I don't support tax increases. But that's the answer people want to hear, that's not the right answer. I don't know what, I didn't know what the budget looked like then, I didn't know how much money we had, I didn't know where we were at, but once I saw where we were at, it wasn't very good. We had a seven percent general fund revenue surplus. Auditors asked for fourteen percent. With the changes we've made in, in the collection of revenue, with the changes we've made in some of the codes and some of the ordinances in the city, we cannot go below a certain percent now. If we do, we've got to start shutting stuff down. So we're incentivized now to keep the budget up, keep the revenue up. You know, I don't know if I can get all this in. When you look at the biomass boiler, it receives money based on the real estate tax assessment. The State Corporation Commission assesses the boiler every year and tells us what we're going to pay on that boiler. And when Dave and I were first arguing, it was at almost a hundred percent. Last year it was at sixty percent. The reason it went down to sixty percent, because our taxes were so low, Dave figured we needed the money. We weren't raising too much. We weren't raising enough money to satisfy, we needed to raise the money. We didn't raise the taxes, the assessment raised the taxes. But what that's going to do is bring us another two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars back on the biomass boiler because now the revenue is up to a point where the State Corporation Commission will assess it higher. Now, how's that for confusion in state government?
Thank you, Mr. Chetwell. Then come to you, Mrs. Wolf. We have some of the lowest real estate taxes. Would you support tax increases for infrastructure upgrades, road improvements and revitalization efforts?
No, I'm not for raising taxes either, but I feel like in order to get some of this infrastructure done that we need, you may have to. I mean, I know that people are sitting and watching saying, can't believe she said that, but sometimes you gotta do just what you gotta do, I mean, whether it's liked or not.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Crozier, then to you, we have some of the lowest real estate taxes in the state. Would you support tax increases for infrastructure, road improvements and revitalization efforts?
To sit in this chair, you have to be realistic. I'm sorry, I would love to say, oh, absolutely not, because if you think about it, if five of us sitting up here raises taxes, we've got to pay taxes too. I don't want to pay more taxes, but the realism is somebody's got to pay for the party. Now, over the last twelve years, and my math, I'm not a math man, I'm a word man, we have gotten over twenty million, twenty million in grants. Part of that is for the New Rayon Bridge. A lot of those grants we have gotten has been for paving, has been for infrastructure, has been for sidewalks, has been for INI, has been for water and sewer, has been for the landfill, has been for the water plant and wastewater. There's been a lot of money that has come in and that has kept us from having to raise taxes. Yes, the assessment raised the taxes, but luckily in the twelve years that I've been here, we have had very, very few utility and/or tax increases that wouldn't cause by inflation of property values or personal property. So realistically, no, but if it gets to that point to where the money gets down to where it was twelve years ago when I got here, when I got here, we had seven percent, it was roughly five, six hundred thousand in the bank, which sounds like a whole lot if you ain't got five hundred thousand bucks, but it's not much to run a government. On top of that, we were immediately looking at a one point seven million dollar rebate taxes that we owed to the mill. Thank God for the mill that they were able to work with us and we got that paid off. There are grant opportunities, we've proven it over the last twelve years, over twenty million dollars in grants, and that has kept us from raising taxes any more than what we've had to.
Thank you, Mr. Crozier. Mrs. Crowder, then, would you support tax increases for infrastructure upgrades, road improvements and revitalization efforts?
I'll be honest, I feel like having the real estate taxes and our personal property taxes both raised so close together, we've made a lot of hardships on people in our community, so I do not want to have other people, I just don't want people to have such a hardship. I would like for us to evaluate the budget right now. I feel like the budget is not user friendly. I can't look at the budget and see what we're spending money on. It's very complicated how it is written out and I would like to see the city make something that's more user friendly so that citizens can look at it and understand it and maybe there's money that we have in some areas that we can use more for infrastructure. Also, I think that still back to community support, I feel like we can get more revenue coming into our area if we have citizens who are shopping locally and dining locally and doing, you know, as much business as you can, keeping our revenue here in order to make it so that hopefully we do not have to raise it. We do honestly have some major infrastructure issues that are, have been being worked on. And since Mr. Dressler has become city manager, I feel like things are moving forward, but we still have a long ways to go. So I'd like to see us more budgeting money so that we have it, saving it, so we have money for infrastructure than raising taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Crowder. That would then bring us to a fresh question, our fourth question of the evening. Mr. Sibot, we'll start with you. Can you list what community events or service organizations you are currently involved in?
I doubt it. I get letters every day, I need to be at this meeting, that meeting. I was at a grand run-up Valley Works meeting this morning at nine o'clock in run-up. I'm on the, I just came off of the board at YMCA. I'm on the PAF Regional Board. I know there's more, I just, I go where I'm supposed to go. I said a little bit ago, we need to have a seat to take. I don't care what board it is, if they want somebody to be there, I want to be there. I want us to be able to walk in and say, what are we doing for COVID? What are we doing with Allegheny Highlands? We were talking about workforce development this morning. What are we doing for workforce development? We've got three things we've got to work on. We've got to work on housing, we've got to work on workforce development and we've got to work on jobs. If you don't have housing, there's no reason to create jobs, you've got no work on to live. If you don't have training, you've got no employees to put into the factories or whatever you create. So it's a, it's a three-fold project that we have to be working on and we've got some people that are interested in doing some housing, we've got some opportunities with some training, but we need people trained in things with skilled labor. We need carpenters, we need electricians, we need plumbers. You know, we've got people that can do things, but we don't have, we couldn't put together a whole construction crew if we had to, I don't think. There's several little ones running around, but it's hard to find people to do those things. And sometimes you call somebody up that's a plumber and say, can you help me? He says, yeah, I've been there for two years. We need people trained in those things now.
Thank you, Mr. Chetwell. Next then to you, Mrs. Wolf, can you list what community events or service organizations you're currently involved in?
The only thing I'm really involved in is I help my niece, my great niece, business creative kids. It's a business for kids, about a year old to five years old, and they do crafts and run around and we did a color run the other day with them and that was very much fun. But other than that, no. And I do help some with my other half and son's basketball teams. Good cheerleader.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Crozier, then to you, can you list the community events or service organizations you're currently involved in?
Probably not all of them, I might be my wife to help me fill in because she says I'm in too much. Over the time I've been on council, not including the years before, I had to write these down real quick. I was on the Economic Development Corporation, up until recently, I was on the board and president of the Historic Masonic Theater. Currently, I'm on the Mountain Gateway Community College Board of Directors. I'm chairman currently of the Department of Social Services Board, I'm on the Old Town Covington Board. Currently, I'm the treasurer of the Covington Fire Department and I've been on the Covington Rescue Squad, and that's all I can really think of right now. But community service has always been, from the time I started when I was sixteen, community service has always been a part of my life. I was taught by my parents that if you have it better, doesn't mean financial, but if you have, if you're blessed, you give that blessing back to other people. And I have tried to do that through all these years. I'm sure I'm missing one, but I'm in a couple of things.
Thank you, Mr. Crozier. Then to Mrs. Crowder, can you list what community events or service organizations you're currently involved in?
So currently, I spend a lot of time coming to city council meetings. I do try to attend both of them every, every month so that I can keep up to date and stick around and ask questions. And I'm the current president of the Covington High School Alumni Association. But I was raised with parents who were big believers in community service and volunteer work. So over the years, I have been officer and APTs in Covington Quarterback Club, I've been a big volunteer for the Allegheny Chapter of the American Heart Association for Relatable Life Teams, I was the president of the Clifton Forge National Guard Support Group, when those guys were gone, to Afghanistan, our local guys were gone. And I felt in Old Town Covington, big believer in Old Town Covington, can't wait till they get their volunteer organization in part going again, but I do believe in community service and kind of like Mr. Sibot, I feel like that we need to have somebody from council in with the board meetings, especially in with the services that the county, the city actually does help out financially, just to see what's going on, but I'm not so sure about being officers in them because I feel it's a big responsibility being just on city council, but I think we need to know what's going on in all the other organizations as well.
Thank you, Ms. Crowder. Mr. Rowe, then to you, can you list what community events or service organizations you're currently involved in?
Well, I've been in EMS since ninety-three, I went up to the level of EMTA, which is one of the work start some of those things we have, cardiac, paravitic, or FDU paravitic. Been in, I teach with state in a lot of roof rescues, trench rescue, also a force coordinator in our machinery rescue and also farm machinery advance, also instructor in basic advance and bus education, teach CPR, basic first aid to the community, I also teach for the mill for unemployed, infectious disease coordinator, we do a lot of support for our church, any of the events we have there, we try to support them. Coach basketball for, and football for Little League since about ninety-eight when my daughter started, now my grandkids are in it, so try to support them as much as possible and also behind the scenes, trying to help and coach them a little bit. Through the years though, in community events, like we, we support the swim event up in, they have our rescue team volunteers to come up there and do the standby for them, a few other things whenever we're calling them, we do a lot of standbys. Football, over the years, we did a lot of football with Covington, they're the ones that normally spearheads and when they need extra people, we come. So over the years, I spend community events or teaching, we teach all over the state of Virginia, volunteer, they'll put us up in a hotel, eat and give us food, but anything else we teach all over the state from out of Covington and Blacksburg for all of those events for, for the state of Virginia, VA, VRS.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. All right, that brings us to a new question, our fifth of the evening, and Ms. Wolf, we'll start with you. Covington's infrastructure, including roads, bridges, public utilities, and public utilities, excuse me, requires ongoing maintenance and updates. How would you prioritize infrastructure projects and what steps would you take to secure funding for these improvements?
Well, first of all, see what kind of grants we got out there to move forward with infrastructure. We've got a lot of roads in Covington that need attention, and they say Columbia Gas, but I happen to know that the street I live on hadn't been paved in over fifty years. So, you know, I think we need to see what grants are out there, what's in the budget, what we can use, and move on and do what we want to do.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Crowder, then, to you, how would you prioritize infrastructure projects and what steps would you take to secure funding for these improvements?
Well, for the first part of it, as far as, I was never an engineer. There were people on council like Tom, we've got consultants that are, that know a lot better with those. Two or three years ago, one of our consultants sat down with us and helped us rank whatever formula VDOT uses to rank a street, where the necessity of it. We're in a better place to know what is the worst and what needs to be done first. Last two years alone, we've spent over two million dollars on paving, and biggest part of it was paving. As far as the funds for it, I agree with Susan, grants. We've done very well over the last twelve years getting grants for, we've done a lot, a lot of the paving you have seen done, that was grant money through VDOT or one other stream of revenue or another. Everybody's street is the most important street. I think Pear Street probably was about forty-five years ago. Her Street was fifty, ours isn't far behind. But in Pear Street's case, yeah, I would love to see it, but there are a whole lot more streets in the city. So it takes people, and I'll tell you, there's smarter than me that understand this black gold we put out there called asphalt. Jackson Street alone, if you talk about black gold, the Jackson Street project alone was over a half a million dollars. That's what we had in the budget in twenty-twelve. I'm glad to say we were able to do that, and there is a long way to go. During one of the I and I projects a few years ago, there was a fire hydrant up near McAllister installed in eighteen ninety-nine. We got some old infrastructure in the city. But once again, you've got to balance that because we either raise taxes or we find grants.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowder. Next to Mrs. Crowder, how would you prioritize infrastructure projects and what steps would you take to secure funding for these improvements?
So I think I was at one of the meetings when they were talking about prioritizing the roads because there was a screen up there and it showed them in red, yellow, and green. Many did try to explain to us in city council how they picked the routes that were in the worse shape, but they tend to ride around and look at, I guess, the cracks in them? I'm not sure how we were saying it. But I feel like we need to prioritize what things need to be done first. We do need to continue upkeep on our roads because that's one of the things that people see most when they come in here as tourists, and it makes our city look better, so we hopefully will get more people to want to live here and to want to start businesses here. Budgeting, I guess more savings for it. I'm not sure if there's activities, I don't really understand all of the budget at this moment, but once it, once it's set out formula in a more user-friendly format, I feel like I'll be able to understand it a little bit more. But if we have money that we can possibly take from one area and use in another, that might not be a priority for whatever it's set out to be at the time, that maybe we can put it towards more infrastructure so we can get things done in a more timely manner. But I like the idea of grants because I know somebody came and talked to us at a council meeting one time about grant writing as well, that they would help us with grant writing so that we can get more money and just more things done in our areas so that it looks better. And it's definitely safer. We definitely want things to be safe and look great for, for everybody coming in and for our citizens.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowder. Mr. Rowe, then, to you, how would you prioritize infrastructure projects and what steps would you take to secure funding for these improvements?
I guess all of it goes back to like you've got to have a five, ten, fifteen, twenty year project. That way you know, you can test bearings and everything to see how long the life is on your water treatment plant. Motors pumps up there, if they're maintained right, then on a, like I said, I'm not saying anybody's not doing these things, you asked me the question of how the outside looking at. So I'm sure they've got a procedure on their maintenance, where preventing maintenance of these things is going to last, but the schedule and life is on. Same thing with the roads, the gentleman that come and did the grant that we're talking about, that's, he went out and did footwork to help prioritize things that the council people can't go out and do all of the footwork that he, they have a lot of people underneath them that makes the whole project work. Roads, lights, safety's going to be a big factor in there. No matter what you have on the infrastructure, safety has to be in there with the police force, fire, rescue. There's money that's, you don't get much revenue back even with the soft building, but you have to put a lot out. Water plant, the bridges, VDOT may have some, it's more stuff that we would need to have more information, to be more educated. Right now, we don't know what the system is of getting grants and things from VDOT unless like Mr. Savel works there, he or had worked there, so he would know a little bit more about it than a everyday citizen. But over the years, our, in the infrastructure, it's like we've got a new building inspector. He plays a factor in there. The gentleman on there now knows quite a bit about his job and a national person, so he's going to try to help the city to get rid of a lot of these infrastructures, or may know things that we wouldn't know that his job tells that will help us to get better, better stuff worked on or prioritized needs worked on quicker than others. Plus with the budgeting, you can only take so much a year to budget for things until the next year, if you have a long-term plan, that way it plays in fact.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Then, Mr. Savel, to you, how would you prioritize infrastructure projects and what steps would you take to secure funding for these improvements?
One of the things we did early on in my career with the city is we quit looking at districts and started looking at problems. It used to be that I want paving in my district, I want sidewalks in my district, and if they put them in my district, I'm getting somebody else's district. So that's when we started rating the roads. And they do a good job of rating the roads. We've done two, three, three million dollars worth of paving in the last two years, and we've got another three quarters of a million dollars planned to be done by the first of July next year. Paving is in a whole lot better shape than it was five years ago. We went several years, started doing the paving because we didn't have any money. We've got a six, five point nine million dollar system in that analysis and preparation for improvements in the sewer system. That's a grant. Problem that is, is an analysis and preparation, it's not doing any work. They'll tell us what we need to do, and, you know, you get grants for that, but then when it comes down to doing work, they don't want to give you any grants. So it's, it's a no-win situation sometimes, but, you know, we've got an eight system with our water and sewer, and we're going to have to do something to get those things straightened out. We just put in a, what was it, eight million dollar EQ basis at the sewer plant because DEQ put a consent order against us because we were having too many overflowed at the plant. We spent eight million dollars and we didn't get grants. That's money coming out of the city, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year for the next thirty years. It's all we pay for. But when DEQ gives you a consent order, you better move. And, you know, those are the things we have to face. We have to face go with regulations and go with rules.
When you say go with?
Thank you, Mr. Savel.
There you go. Thank you. Been waiting.
All right, that brings us then to a fresh question. Mr. Crowder, we are back, we're ready to you, sir. Covington has seen younger generations move away for education and employment opportunities. What strategies would you propose to create job opportunities, educational programs, and amenities that would encourage younger residents to stay in the city or return after college?
Ooh, wow. If I could figure out the answer to this question, I could retire a millionaire, because it's not just here. Every small town in America goes through the same thing. I've got a daughter now who we are looking at maybe one day going somewhere else. Not that she hates the area, but there's opportunities elsewhere. And as a dad, I'm not really for that. We've got, with the school system, we have now one of the best education systems in the state. I'm trying to suck up to you, Jonathan, but we do have one of the best school systems in the state. Getting kids prepared is a lot, it is going great with that. The kids are going to be prepared. How you crack the nut as far as keeping them here, that's the sixty-four thousand dollar question. I started covering these forums about twenty-five years ago, and that question was asked twenty-five years ago to council members then, how would you keep young people here? A lot of it, well, there's two parts of it, three if you think about it, jobs. We need to have jobs here that the kids will want to stay for. Now, with broadband, we have a monumental opportunity to attract people who want to work at home, and that option wasn't available twelve years ago when I sat up here. So kids that are a whole lot more technologically advanced than I am, they now can live. The Chamber does a great program, I guess they still do, with the remote work and live here. Housing is going to be a big thing. They've got to have a place to live, they've got to have a job, they've got to have something to do recreationally. We've got that covered pretty well, but we've got to figure out how we can attract these kids for the recreation, for the beauty, for the lower tax rate, and encourage them to come here and live because they can work at home.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowder. Mrs. Crowder, then, to you, what strategies would you propose to create job opportunities, educational programs, and amenities that would encourage younger residents, younger city residents to stay or return after college?
I want to dive in on this because it's a big question. I actually have a daughter of my own who lives in Harrisonburg because the opportunities are so much greater up there. The money's better up there, there's more jobs, there's more things to do, there's more restaurants, there's more places to shop. So we're kind of at a disadvantage being in a small town, but then when you get to be my age, you want to come back to this place because you want things to be a little bit slower. You want to have friends and family around who are not going out and enjoying all of the fast light things, you are wanting all the slower light things. But definitely we have to have a way to have job, more jobs here. We actually might actually, we might actually be able to get more kids just being in the area just by increasing our housing and light life in our areas because there's so many people that do work at home now that we could still increase our population. But as far as getting the jobs themselves here, I'm not sure. That's the, the topic we were talking about earlier, that maybe we need to get up with economic development and see what type of things that they're doing, and maybe find ways to market our area more so that people would want to come here, because we do have a lot to offer. Educational programs, maybe we need to start with our kids when they're like middle school age and have programs, even if it's after-school programs, and things that maybe might interest them, to try to keep them local, even if it's volunteer work or cooking, gardening, STEM projects, but things that they might be interested even in our, I don't know. I'm wanting to say that, I want to, I want to say that if we start with the kids young, that they will be more interested in staying if we can keep them moving in the same direction as they get into high school.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowder. Mr. Rowe, then, to you, what strategies would you propose to create job opportunities, educational programs, and amenities that would encourage younger residents to stay in the city or return after college?
We have an excellent school system. Over the years, Covington has produced, and Allagane County back there, excellent people coming out of the city, but we're not keeping them. You see all of having success everywhere else in the state or in the United States or beyond. But also with that being said, everybody wants to college, and now you need more labor force technology. Would you do local apprentices? I know a couple of businesses do local apprenticeship programs. My stepson, he went to Run-up, worked night school, he did it. That would've been the only job he could've done. He wasn't going to be a person that's going to be in book studies, things like that. But he finally went and got it, took him four years, but he finally settled down and got it, and he likes it, he's making good money now. Need to see what other locality, they're exploding all around us, to see what they might be doing that we didn't, or some avenue they pursued that we didn't. It may have already been covered, but to get fresh people in all the areas around us, they're still, you know, broadening and exploring all new avenues, but they're still proceeding to grow. Education's a big thing, you know, either way you go, whether it's be on labor force and college. The colleges that got down there, they're exploring new ideas, you hear all the times, they're trying now to even do a housing. That would be great, to keep people here. Wi-Fi, we're working on it, I understand the governor's doing a lot of things for it. After-school tutoring, to help these kids to get the better education they need to get out of school, but also tutoring to get them there where they're going to get into a trade school somewhere, or offering through our systems here, whether it be night school at JRTC, college, local people doing it to where they can start to help apprenticeship programs and local businesses here that can be certified to do it.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowe. Mr. Savel, then, to you, what strategies would you propose to create job opportunities, educational programs, and amenities that would encourage younger residents to stay in the city or return after college?
We need to train to what people want to do. Right now, at the Delta, you've got Hound's Roots, Knoll Cafe, and Wild's Garden Center, Zachary Enterprises. They've joined together, created a public, private partnerships. They will have hydro, static, hydroponic growing, working with the middle school across the street. They're doing some STEM projects, they're doing forced STEM projects in the brick building once they get to that point. But right now, they're creating the greenhouses that'll have the hydroponic. That's all new technology. That was heard of five years ago. Our internet is above and beyond most, what most people have. We've got some slow places up around the western end of this county, but the rest of our city has a good internet system. And we can, with Johnson and the Chamber, with what they're doing, you know, live here, work here, work for somebody in DC, but work here. Then we start creating those trails and streams and hiking and all those things that we're already doing, but start to publicize them even more. And it's pretty neat to go through Washington DC and see an ad from Allagane Highlands that the Chamber's put up there on one of the big screens. Those are the things that are being done. We have a lot of people moving here. The people that bought from the alley, the main street that go here on Port, they came here from Northern Virginia. Knoll Cafe, they came from Northern Virginia. The Mexican guy that's down on Main Street, he came from Southwest Virginia. You know, people are coming from a lot of different places. The people on other buildings down the street, you know, they came out of Boston and Atlanta, and they're coming here because of the quality of life. I've been wondering that. How long would I have to talk for you to jump up there?
Thank you, Mr. Savel. Ms. Wolf, then, we will come to you. What strategies would you propose to create job opportunities, educational programs, and amenities that would encourage younger residents to stay in the city or return after college?
Well, first of all, we're going to have to have jobs in which they got their degrees in when they went to college, and places to live, things for them to do, entertain them at a point, you know, I agree with David and Susan on both of that. I mean, you've got to have something for them to do, and then a lot of times, when they leave out here and go to college, they say, this place is in my rearview mirror, I might come back and see. I mean, but you want them to come back, and you want them to be successful. So, you know, you just have to find jobs, housing, and things for them to do. So, you know, you just have to find jobs, housing and things for them to do.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. That will bring us to our seventh question of this evening, and Ms. Crowder, we will start with you. The Allegheny Highlands Public Schools plays a vital role in the community's future. How do you plan to collaborate with local schools to improve educational outcomes and ensure that students are prepared for the workforce or higher education?
I feel like our school systems are doing a really great job right now, but I would like to see other programs, like this STEM program, I know it had been talked about, but I didn't know it was actually involved in the schools already. We had talked about, I actually talked about it in the Covington High School Alumni Association meeting about different type of things that we could do in order to help the kids. And we were talking about programs like before school and after school where we can have volunteers come in and help with programs that might not necessarily be part of the curriculum, but can be things that would help the kids and help them with motivation and help them receive extra help if they might need help and, um, give them other opportunities and things that might be out there that they might want to do. But all in all, I think so far, the combined schools is working out very well for us and I think the kids are going to continue to do well. We just need to make sure that we're keeping up with the technology so the kids have what they need. And I think there would be some cool programs to put into the vocational school. Um, even if it was things with fire and rescue, I think that would be a pretty cool program to put in there and that would give kids a incentive to volunteer and give them extra career opportunities. Anyway, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Crowder. And I will against to you all due to time constraints, this seventh question will be our final one of the evening. Following this, we'll do a closing statement. So then, if we would go then to you, Mr. Rowe. How do you plan to collaborate with local schools to improve educational outcomes and ensure that students are prepared for the workforce or higher education?
This bottom line, the council and the board supervisor, city councillor Clifton, bottom line, they're the ones supporting the school system. So in any way they can advance our students, we need to support a hundred and ten percent. Where it might be worth sacrificing in other directions. Consolidation, uh, it was a rough time to start with. It's here, what we got, we got to make it the best we can for our students. There's challenges, I expect anything, then trying to run three localities in one school system. Blessing, um, we don't want any kids left behind. Whether it be the kid that has challenges, uh, for behavioral or educational, we need to make sure we have every avenue we can to make sure that child makes it through the school system. That's where we go back to what, uh, Susan was saying, our education, um, through our, uh, JRTC, we give other avenues we have liberated on before about going into workforce, not necessarily going into the college setting. Avenue's are out there, uh, being we have a bigger school system, hopefully there will be more, uh, classes we can bring in now being we have a bigger school system that may not have been offered in a smaller school system. But the bottom line is on the school system, we don't want to have our kids being left out. If we have complaints from the school system or from, um...